Good afternoon, it's 1:30 PM. We're here for a special budget workshop session and the meeting will come to order. Mr. Kirkendall, you pay me the application?
Yes, sir. Through heaven we call that we thank you for this day, Lord, we thank you for those that we work with and we count it a joy to put a budget together and we pray for wisdom and direction and guidance. We pray for an atmosphere of teamwork, we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, budget workshop, workshop session to review and discuss the past, present, and future budget needs and concerns for the following departments. I'm not sure what I had for lunch, but I can't talk, I apologize. Before we start with the first department, Angela, could I get you to re-present the information that you received earlier from the appraisal district?
Yes. On May the nineteenth, Alex Stevens with appraisal district presented to the court an estimated loss in property values. The estimated net taxable value, including minerals, as of April the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, is two billion, seven hundred forty-three million, six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Then the rolling stock value, we have not received that as of date-to-date, so we will use last year's amount, and that's ten million, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. For a total of two billion, seven hundred and fifty-three million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. If we use our current tax rate of fifty-six cents, and then we have a, that would give us fifteen million, four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents. Our estimated frozen tax loss is three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. And then our estimated budget tax revenue is fifteen million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-two cents. The estimated budgeted tax revenue from last year is fifteen million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is equivalent to a six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents tax revenue loss at this point.
All right, thank you, Angela. Does anybody have any questions about what was presented just now by the auditor? All right, we'll start with the first department on the budget workshop, agrileth extension agent. And Angela, I think you and I talked about this, they're currently called the farm and home agents, but we talked about renaming that department to more accurately reflect-
That is correct.
-the great name of that department, and Joseph is okay with that as well, right?
Yeah, and we seem to kind of come out with name changes about every three months or so, so.
Well, if this one could stick for a year or two, that'd be great.
I'll try to tell them.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Singletary, how are you doing?
We're doing all right, looks like we're gonna, we're gonna get by on our current budget just fine. The other thing, if you, if you looked after speaking with you, Judge McDaniel, I moved the miscellaneous out, 'cause it, we've been using our miscellaneous to kind of cover the other expenses, so I figured out where we were covering it at, and I just went ahead and-
Yes, sir.
-moved them into there. The equipment, computer expenses, I increased that because the Xerox, that's where our Xerox charge comes out of.
Okay.
And, but I decreased our office supplies, 'cause the only major thing that comes out of there is our ink cartridges. And then the telephone, I dropped that pretty significantly.
Yes, sir.
And then I did have a three hundred dollar increase on travel, because my, my district administrator asked me to go to a camp to help kids, and I just didn't, I didn't have it this year, and, 'cause I didn't budget for it last year, so. And I told him that, and he said, "Well, if I have the chance, try to increase that." So, some of the funds I pulled out miscellaneous, I just moved it up there to travel.
If, if I'm correct on this, it looks like overall you reduced your budget by about a hundred and thirty dollars?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, overall, I was able to reduce my budget.
Now, Joseph, you gave up money last year too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's the item, that travel expense item is the one that he cut. And by doing so, he was unable to go to one of the functions that his director had asked him to attend?
Well, it was just a new, he didn't ask me to do previous year, so I don't know, I need-
Right, something that just came up?
Yeah, it just came up, so I've allotted for that now, so.
Okay.
Joseph, look like you done a good job putting it together.
I told Tammy, I told Tammy if we're gonna have to cut the budget more, it's coming out of her paycheck, so.
I've got a question, you know, we spend a lot of money on ink cartridges. I know in our office that we use, away from here, we network with the printers, we're just, our printers.
Your Xerox printer?
Yep, and I'm wondering if that's something we could do in our offices, you know, 'cause I know if Gina and I had it, we could just default to the copier, and we're already using that ink anyway, we could probably save a lot of money.
When you do that, does it cost you per copy, though, through Xerox, if you have multiple print jobs?
Yes.
It would start costing-
Well, the rate that I'm getting is very, 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 very good.
It will, you can also, I think we can interrupt, but we just had this in our department, we have saved a lot of money switching over to the multi-Xerox, we also got a colored one, and if you, you have to raise your numbers in your copies, and it kind of evens itself out if you do that. If you see you're going over your set number.
Okay.
That's what I did, Chris, we just, we just swapped over to all in one, Xerox, everything.
Yeah.
And it, that's what you do, is you raise it, but they do charge you by copy, so if you have lower number, number of copies, then you go over that, then basically pay a penalty.
Right. You wanna look into that, too?
I, I-
For your office and see?
What was it called?
I'll just call Xerox and find out if you could-
Do y'all have a Xerox copier in there?
Yes, sir.
But y'all don't print to it currently, is it, is it your fax machine also?
We print to it, in our, it is our fax machine also.
Okay.
Okay, so is that, is that what you're talking about when you talk about printer ink?
No, well, that's the printer ink that, yes, sir, but the, the under equipment and computer expenses, the Xerox, that's where that money comes out of, to pay Xerox.
What you were talking about earlier in your office supplies, the seven, you dropped it to seven fifty, and you said the only thing that comes out of there is the ink cartridges, I think that's what Commissioner Kirkendall's referencing?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's where the, that's where the ink for that printer comes out of.
Okay.
Is that, that expense, the ink and paper and all that stuff.
So, it's, you're probably actually talking about toner?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
So, he's doing that?
Okay, cool.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Joseph, we appreciate it. Item B, the health department, Ms. Toy Aker, how are you?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
I see Laura's back there helping you.
I was taking up her own view, so I lost the ball, so it was great. Do y'all mind if I come up?
No, no.
Do each of you have a copy of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
The first printout that we have is the account number zero one zero, six thirty dash one oh two.
Okay.
Is the starting account number.
Okay, this is actually the preferred location that Angela and Laura both want the health department expenditures and budget to start coming out of. It, right now, it comes out of the five nine five.
Okay.
Laura and Angela, make and explain a little bit more on that particular part of it. If you will look on the five nine five one, since it's the current location.
Five nine five five oh two.
That's the second page.
Okay.
Okay, and you have current location at the top, now I understand what that means, okay, all right.
Um, if you'll look at the two thousand and fifteen year to date, at the bottom, it's for six months, and that was for ninety-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight, thirty-seven.
Yes, ma'am.
So, for a total year, that would be a hundred and ninety thousand, five sixteen, seventy-four. So, our requested budget for two thousand and sixteen would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, we're actually sixty-three thousand, five sixty less than last year for our health department budget. I also wanted to mention, on the miscellaneous at the very bottom, you see sixty-two, fifty-five, thirty-six. Those miscellaneous comes out of our funds as far as what we get for permits from Marion, and anything that we take in for shots, for flu shots, or tuberculosis, skin test shots. For some reason, since I've been here, we've always picked up the waste management from the jail, and we pay for it, it comes out of our expenditures, 'cause we don't really have a budget. So, I don't know who we need to approach with that, because it looks like we're spending an awful lot of money, but in all actuality, we're probably only actually spending a third of that.
Okay.
So, I don't know where that will come-
So, you're saying two-thirds of this sixty-two, fifty-five is actually, and actually, that's only for six months?
Right.
So, it's more like, nearly thirteen thousand?
Yes.
And you're saying two-thirds of that is, is actually coming from the jail?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Each, usually about every quarter, the pricing goes up as far as what they, the waste management that they pick up, whether it's needles, whether it's bloody sheets that we get from the jail, or, you know, anything at the health department, anything to do with tuberculosis, 'cause it's based on your weight, it's not based on what you do, or how many containers you have, it's based on your weight.
Okay.
So, I, I know that that could be cut down dramatically, okay.
Okay, well, it might be cut down out of your budget, it's gonna have to come out of the sheriff's if we, if we decide to move that there.
Right.
And if I understand correctly, this is, the county is paying this, this five nine five five oh two, this is not a grant, right?
Correct.
So, this is all county money here, that's why we had talked to Toy about putting it into the general fund on the first page, because it's a little confusing, because she has it in their area with her grants, but this is not grant funding, this is county funded.
This is the money that you, the county picks up that our grants do not.
Okay.
And when I came here in two thousand eight, this is how it was set up, and so, between the three of us, we've kind of talked, 'cause we don't actually have a budget, we just have expenditures that come out of there.
Okay.
Okay, so explain the, the zero one zero and the five nine five again?
The zero one zero is your general fund, and that's where we have talked about putting it into for the new budget, and the five nine five is what she currently has, that she's charging her expenditures to now, but it, that's, the five hundred funds are her grants, and so, it's a little confusing, 'cause it was over in the five hundred funds, so we thought it was kind of like grants, and then through further investigation, we found out that it's actually county money that we're having to pay for this part, no, no grant funds on this part.
Okay, so, and this is just an identical, those, these two sheets are identical?
Yes.
So, that was actually my question, since they're both exactly the same, what, what happens to this five nine five if it gets moved to the zero one zero?
I guess it goes away.
This year is five nine five, next year, we would like for it to be in the general fund, zero one zero.
Okay, I got it, my thing.
Are we talking about October?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Well, if that be the case, is your number's gonna be the same, because her grant doesn't run with our fiscal year?
Um, I, this is, this is the money that she uses with her fiscal year, yes, sir, and then we can do that as well, yeah, if I understand your question.
So, this hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine fifty-seven is what it'll cost the county for the health department from October first of two thousand six, fifteen, to September thirtieth of two thousand sixteen?
I think you're correct, is it go?
Now, your grants are specified when they start and when they end on these other accounts that we have.
I didn't bring my book from last year in the past, is it my understanding that we haven't had a health department budget?
In the budget, in the software, yes, sir, that is correct, no grants are in our software system, or was presented into Commissioner's court, we're changing that now, we're, in our net data system, we will have grants budgeted in our, in our software.
So, we, we didn't show expenditures in the health department last year to come up with our budget?
Not in this five nine five that was presented in this tool.
So, unless I have a misunderstanding, then I probably do, and I hope I can be corrected, if I look at this total package here, she's got it broke down, immunization, Ebola, and everything, we're looking at seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that we're gonna have as expenditures this year as we didn't have last year.
No, sir, no, the grants, this is the only one that the county pays for, the following pages are grants pay for.
So, out of the seven hundred and seventy, the county picks up the one twenty-six, and the rest is paid by the state, if I'm, if I have that right? So, it is seven seventy, that is the total amount, but the state covers five hundred, six hundred?
Whenever we get through with all this, when we get our copy for this year, the only thing we're gonna show as accounting expenditures, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in the health department.
That's correct.
I would actually probably like for it to show the, all of the expenses, and then show how much comes back from the state, and then have the net at the bottom, that the one twenty-six is what the county pays.
Right, and what I thought he was asking is this will be in the general fund, so it'll be part of the county, all of this will be in the software system under her grant funding.
But the two thousand and fifteen line has zeros, so what was that in two thousand and fifteen?
There was not a budget from two thousand and six forward that ever got entered into the, to the budget process, the prior auditor had, from two thousand and five, and before, it had a budget, but then a prior auditor of two thousand and six, occurring, took it out of the grant, I mean, out of the general area, put it in the grant area, it was still general funds, but the budget was never set up.
Yeah, when you look in your book, there's a health department line item, but it's all zeros, and it's been like that for the past ten?
But where was, where was it carried, was it carried into Commissioner's court expenses, or where was it carried?
It used to be in eighteen dash five eleven, which is your general fund of the GSA system.
Okay.
Which this is just, oh, one oh six thirty, it's just-
But do we know what that was?
Sir?
Do we know how much that was?
If you'll go back to your five nine five page, and look at your actual two thousand and fifteen year to date, the six months is ninety-five thousand, two fifty-eight, thirty-seven, so for-
Good page, good page.
Second page, sir?
Oh, okay.
So, for the year, it was actually a hundred and ninety thousand, five sixteen, seventy-four.
Okay, and this year's gonna be a hundred and twenty-six out of?
Correct.
That's good, we're trying to get to-
So, it's actually sixty-three thousand less.
This is how much is going down?
Okay, that's great.
From two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen?
Buy that with no problem.
I think that's, that's good to know.
I really tried to raise the percentages in each of our grants to try to pull some off the county as much as we could.
When we met the other day, we talked about that worksheet that you had, it had all the percentages on there, did you get that filled in with numbers?
Uh, no, sir, I didn't.
Okay, but we're still working on it?
Actually, we do, but Laura hasn't, and we didn't make a copy of it, so.
Okay.
Um, but I'll give it to you, yeah.
Thank you.
And if you like that setup, that's just something I came up with my own, you can, I'll send it, I'll send it out to y'all.
Okay, thank you.
You wanna move to the next one?
Our next one is the Ebola virus.
Ebola, mm-hmm, these are funds that were just extra funds available that the state would like us to have for travel expenses, to be able to be trained for any new suits that they may come out with, to protect us. These supplies, the reason that number's so high is because we're gonna try to have some Ebola suits here at the county for us to use for the health department, and for any emergency personnel, including the sheriff's department.
So, the supplies would cover that?
Yes, sir, these, these are a hundred percent, and there's no match.
Okay, now, where was this carried last year?
This is a new, this is a new one.
New, okay, so we take that from the sixty-three thousand?
This, this is a grant, correct?
Oh, that's a grant?
This is a grant, yes, sir.
We're done with our, yeah.
You have any questions about that one?
Next one we have is the PHEP hazard expenditures.
Correct, the two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars covers for both Harden County and Orange County. You, do you have the percentages there, Judge, with you, okay?
Oh, ma'am.
Um, that consists of myself, Shelley Dilbeck, Amanda Moore, which is our Orange County planner, and Sharon Whitley, that's our Harden County planner, and that includes all of our salaries there.
And again, this is one hundred percent state funded?
No, sir.
Okay.
Only Sharon and Amanda are a hundred percent state funded, the rest, I'm, uh, ten percent, and Shelley is, I think, fifty, fifty-eight percent.
Can you just tell me, out of the two twenty-two, three oh seven, how much is state and how much is county, do you have that lump sum?
Percentage-wise?
Looks like you do, I'm getting a guess from the back.
The grant award is the two, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, the state match is two hundred and two thousand, eighty-five dollars, so the county match for that grant is twenty thousand, two, two hundred and twenty-two.
So, that twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two is not in the one twenty-six, nine fifty-seven?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
The county funds, that's, that's over there.
That's included in the one twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all the figures that I'm giving you, all of that front figure is complete with everything.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about any specific line item on the PHEP hazard expenditures?
Then it will be moving to a different fund, it's gonna be five oh three, I mean, whatever, what was it?
It's five oh three, three thirty, one hundred.
It used to be five oh five, five oh five, it's going to be five oh three, five oh five, beginning July first, the state just moved their year to date around.
Okay.
We begin in July instead of September one.
Toy, on the travel expense in this budget, it looks like it more than doubled, can you provide an explanation on that?
We have probably four, I believe, additional training classes that we have to go to, they usually revolve, your major trainings usually revolve on a four-year period cycle, and it's time for everybody to go now, instead of just two traveling, there'll be all four of us probably traveling most of the time. They're gonna have a lot of additional training on Ebola this year, and so, that's gonna be part of that as well. And we always put some over extra, and we always have some that we put back into the county at the end of the year.
In fact, I think you mentioned to me the other day that we would have that this year.
Yes, sir.
Do you have that amount yet, or?
No, sir.
You'll have it here in a few months?
We probably have it in, maybe the last week in July.
Okay.
We try not to spend everything, 'cause you know, storage space is a big issue, so we can't spend as much as we project on supplies every year.
Everybody ready to move on to the next one? The health inspector expenditure. Can I see your note that this says it's for a two-year?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a proposal for a two-year grant, which would be the thirty-two thousand, nine seventy-two, now, we would have to renew it next year, just like we would normally do, but the proposed budget is for the thirty-two for her salary.
Is that for the, just one year, but it, but it, so it's thirty-two for one year, and renews again for second year?
Right, but it'll just be that seventy-two, and it'll be half of the thirty-two, three fifty.
So, the thirty-two is two years of?
Two years.
Can we do that, Angela, can we show two years in this one budget?
I thought you did one year at a time.
Yeah, thirty-two thousand, three fifty is for one year, and then all you do is, is just renew it, and it becomes thirty-two, three fifty again, it's all of two years, sixty-four, seven, but in the budget, you just reflect the thirty-two, three fifty.
Okay.
It's just reflected the one year, yeah.
So, is the, without me putting a calculator to it, Laura?
Not here.
The two thousand and fifteen budget on salaries is seventeen-four, and the requested is thirty-two-nine, so it's seventeen-four twice?
Yes, sir.
Thirty?
Yes, sir, and we can break it down to the one year.
On the, on the bottom number here, five nine oh four nine, is that all grant?
That'll be, yes, sir, for two years, and we can break it in half.
Okay, so that first line item will change from thirty-two, nine seventy-two to seventeen-four, twenty-eight?
Okay.
So, it's just for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen?
Sure.
And that means each one of these figures are gonna be divided in half?
Correct.
What about the travel line item?
Travel item?
It's seventy-three, twenty, will it be divided in half?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's still gonna be an increase over last year, though?
Yes, sir, she's actually going to more training this year as well, and then we do it with an increase for whatever the state rate is to, and the more that, the more percentage I put in travel and supplies, and for her telephone, the less that comes off the county, and the county just picks up more of her salary and fringe. Percentage-wise, it would still come out the same, it just looks better if you're doing it that way.
And this is still a one hundred percent state funded?
No, sir, Marion is at fifty-one percent, and the county picks up the rest, which is in that original figure for the county.
So, fifty-one percent state and forty-nine percent county?
Am I correct in that when you put it on a one-year basis, the budget had gone down a couple thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And then that forty-nine still calculated in the one twenty-six?
Correct.
Hut, hut.
The next one we have is the immunization branch slash locals.
Correct, and this is also for one year, which will begin September one, it's for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four seventy-seven, that's been the same figure since two thousand and ten. The salaries fringe is included for myself, Shelley Dilbeck, Tammy, Kathy, and Sheila, so that's five positions that's paid far from this grant.
Do you know what the split is on this one?
Do you have that paper?
Do you map, what do you, what split are you having to have, what the county?
Well, the actual dollar amount would be good, how much the county, how much is county and how much is state?
The county, the portion of the county is already into the hundred and twenty-six thousand, um, the figures that are on these are kind of, in essence, a hundred percent, because they're salaries and stuff, so I don't know that.
So, the eighty-seven, two thirty-two is straight grant salary, not county?
Correct.
Correct, as well as the, all of these salaries are straight grant, everything that you see on this paper is straight grant.
So, you're saying your grants that you've presented here are a hundred percent state on these pages, and then the county's match is on the front page, is that what you're stating?
Okay. Because each person is paid a certain percentage out of each grant, the only people that are a hundred percent are out of the PHEP, which is the planners, which were Sharon and Amanda.
One for Harden County, one for Orange County.
Correct, those are the only hundred percent grants that are paid, now, those percentages are only solely based on what I come up with, you know, based on the amount of money that's in the grant, its originality, we could put, you know, say I'm ten percent in PHEP, we could raise me or lower me either way, it just depends on how much the county wants to pick up for that particular person.
But if we lower you, someone else would get raised, I mean, that's how it all works out, right?
Right.
And they're all based on current rates, so if anything goes up, you know, you have to, you have to, at the end of every year on the grant, a lot of times, what we'll do is credit back to the county, because maybe they didn't spend it overall, so we'll give the money back to the county, and then charge them into the grant, the full grant totally. So, it's usually credit back to the county.
That's what you were talking about earlier, that y'all will do sometime in late July or early August?
Mm-hmm.
All right, looks like we just have one left. PHEP hazards expenditures?
Yes, that's just a continuation grant that we've already have going in this present year, and we just have the rest to spend in two thousand and sixteen.
And it moved to the, that's the one that moved to the five oh three, five oh five, because it gives a lot of work, so you'll see the same figures on the two hazards.
Okay, so this is really not a separate, this is the same as?
Same, it's an ongoing, yes, sir.
The very first one we looked at, same as this one, okay, and that's where the state portion is two oh two, oh eighty-five, and the counties is twenty, two twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
Are you mandated for this grant to break it down in different departments like this, to present this to us?
No, sir.
I would like to see, this is very confusing, I would like to see a health department budget, and I don't care if they work in PHEP or anything else, what we pay them and what the state pays them, when we put this together right over here.
And that's what we'll have when you have that worksheet you provided us the other day, that's got the percentages on there, when you have those figures in there, that'll, that'll be, that'll show what you're asking, I believe, is that correct?
The reason I filled this out is because that's what the judge had given me to fill out, the other thing is just something that I've always done, will you give me your copy, Lauren?
But Toy, isn't this first page what the county pays, and then the following pages is what the state pays?
Yes. Yes.
Is that what you're asking for?
No, I would like to see, instead of having five- No, I would like to see, instead of having five different pieces of paper with salaries on it, one health department budget?
Yes, sir.
With salaries, with all these included, and then she will know what the breakdown is, if we, if anybody has any question, what department they work in, for a total number of salaries?
Okay.
What the, what the, the grant is and what the county match has to be.
Okay.
At least, that's my opinion. I don't know.
And what the total county obligation is on that, on that department, however it's put together.
And this is what you give us?
So we can look at what it was last year and what it is proposed this year.
Pay my percentage as seventy percent, and that's how much y'all pay me. This is how much I pay Shelley, five thousand.
Okay, but I mean, how, how y'all reported is?
And so on.
In different?
And that's what?
Just simplify it.
So, so we can see like the health unit here, which has nothing beside it, we see it's like every other, so we compare year to year more often.
That's what I was saying earlier. If it all, if it totals with seven seventy-seven, and then have a note at the bottom, like I've seen in some of the others, that this portion is the state and this portion is the county, then it's all easy for me to understand, and anybody else who looks at it understands it real easy.
But do, do I understand right that bottom line, taking every piece of paper, that the health department's budget is going to be sixty-three thousand, approximately less than last year?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
The county portion will be sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, less than twenty fifteen?
That's okay. That's good.
Okay. Sorry for the confusion, but I filled out what, I can redo it though. Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't confusing to nobody but me.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
No, that's, that's not the mistake.
I was confused on it, but bottom line's all I really care about.
Yeah.
Is this, or, and I might be stepping out of line here, is this the time to discuss part-time versus full-time or not?
We can, yes, sir.
The judge and I had sat with, uh, Toy and looked at, uh, her personnel, and, uh, had come, of course, Toy gave us any information that we requested, but she, it wasn't her idea. But the judge and I thought it would be a good idea to move one position to part-time and save some money, and she said that would be feasible on the amount of work that they do. Is that correct?
We talked about two personnel.
Two personnel, so, uh, now, the point that Mr. Pelt just made, I didn't put a pen and piece of paper to it, a sixty-three thousand dollar decrease is very good over last year, so I don't know what the rest of the court feels about that.
I think what I would like to recommend, if it's okay with court, uh, Toy brought up some additional services that we could try to provide in this next year. I would like for us to sit down and talk about that. Uh, some of the services will be directed to our employees. Uh, and if she's able to provide those services, uh, she would need the staff that she has, and if we're able to start doing that and make a, make a, uh, difference in our employees' healthcare, I'd like to see us move in that direction. If it doesn't work out, then we, we'll probably have to look at doing something different with personnel in the health department.
Right. And something that I, I try to reiterate, and I've, Lauren and I've talked about it over the last seven years. I never have really agreed that there hasn't been a health department budget, because it makes us look like we're spending all this money. And then I want you all to understand, we do have a lot of staff over there, and I know that a lot of people complain about it, but each position that we have is not a get-up-and-physically-do-this position. It is a monitoring situation that we have to do throughout the county. We are in every school district in the county. We are in every daycare. We're in every nursing home, every emergency room, and every doctor's office is almost daily. And we are here to, I guess, let the general public know about health issues, and we're here to protect our citizens, and I think that we do a really good job of it.
I agree.
But that being said, we do have a lot of lax time in certain positions at the health department, and that's what the judge and I had discussed, that maybe on our downtime, like when it's not flu season, when it's not hurricane season, that we can shift some of our people, because they are partially paid by the county. Now, I can't pull anybody, the two people that are a hundred percent grant-paid, obviously, but I can pull the other ones, and they can file, they can answer the phone. There's lots and lots of stuff that they could do to help out. So if you see any of us in a different area, that's, you know, that may be why we are in a different area, but we're glad to do anything that?
You're talking about helping other departments rather than the department that you're?
Correct.
They're hired for.
Correct. Like, we can file at the jail, we can, you know, answer the phone.
Then they would be charged to that department, right?
No, sir, because it comes out of, it still comes out of the county fund, so no, sir, it would still be their percentage-wise. Because say I'm, uh, seven, uh, starting July first, I will be seventy percent paid out of the county. So basically, y'all could pull me wherever, you know, because I'm only thirty percent into the grants, as long as I give my thirty percent time into the grants. And all that happened, if you'll remember back whenever I was switched over to WIC, so that's why I'm so much in the county now, and y'all pay such a large portion of my salary, because when we moved to WIC and all that, you know, kind of?
But I believe in the current year, we pay around ninety-two percent from the county, is towards your salary, and that's dropping to seventy, is that correct?
And it's dropping to seventy, correct.
She's already reduced one position out of the health department, so.
Yes. Yeah. And also, um, I know that Commissioner Cooper had asked me, I do make, you know, twenty-six, I think, dollars an hour, and I don't make sixty thousand dollars a year because I'm part-time, and I know Mr. Cooper didn't know that, so I'm not sure if you're aware of that either. I haven't made over thirty thousand in the last five years, so, because I am part-time, but I'm here every day. I just may not work a full eight or nine hours. Now, toward hurricane season, anytime we have any kind of outbreak, of course, I am here more. So all of our budgeted for our grants is for the entire eighty hours, every paycheck. But I don't get paid that, so just thought I'd let you know.
But you're, you're part-time?
Yes, sir.
But you're not part-time somewhere else also, are you?
No, sir.
Okay, so?
No, sir.
Uh, you have a special situation. If we look for another director, we might not find a part-time director, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Every time I needed her and called her, she answers. Now, there was one time she's on a cruise and she didn't answer, but?
Yeah.
Might be a unique situation, and I think lovely to mention that some of these positions might could go part-time.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
My only question would be if they go part-time, are those people willing to work part-time?
That would be probably the number one question.
If you just try to fill that position part-time, can you get qualified people?
Mm-hmm. To do it, probably not.
I'm all for part-time if that fits the deal.
Right.
Yeah.
But hopefully, it'll be like Wayne said, that, uh, they'll be able to do more for the healthcare of our employees, and then they, we wouldn't want them to be part-time.
It's gonna be our focus, I believe.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
Everyone else?
Oh, yeah, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah. Our ultimate goal would be to have a full-running health department again, like we did, uh, when Dr. Hooks was here. That would be our ultimate goal. The need is definitely there. There's, we get calls every single day, all day long, that they need healthcare, you know, at a lower rate, so.
All right. Does anyone have anything else for the health department? Do you have anything further?
I don't think so.
I'd appreciate the book.
Funny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toy. Item C, the WIC department, Latasha? Good afternoon.
Hello. Uh, just to let y'all know that WIC is state-funded, and the county, uh, you all doesn't pay for anything.
Well, this ought to be short then.
Look, just go ahead and get that out the way. Everything is state-funded.
That's good. That's good.
Well, that eight thousand increase in budget doesn't look all that bad.
Well, the eight thousand increase is for the, um, dietitian and the peer counselor, and the reason we increase that is because if we use the money, the state will provide more money. So the more clients we see, the more money we get from the state. So it's better to go ahead and increase it and see, will they, uh, approve it? And if they do, we try and spend all of it, and they just keep increasing.
Tell them over the next five years, you need about one point eight million.
We're trying to get?
How's that?
Um, and also on the extra, uh, funding on the? Third page. Hopefully, whenever we move into our next, into our new building, we'll be able to ask for more money to?
Under this additional funding?
Yes, under, it's on the third page.
Okay. So of the, all three of these, the state pays a hundred percent?
What is the line item for rent for clinics? What do y'all rent?
Um, we rent over in Salisbury, at the old Gulf Coast building now. We rent from Methodist, um, church.
I left it behind.
And is that, that's going up next year?
No, it's, it's, it has always been three fifty for a while. Uh, we pay, Sire Lake, we give them four hundred a year, once a year. But, um, if you all know any place in Salisbury where we can, you know, house for free, WIC, that would be awesome. But just as of now, we pay three fifty, uh, um, a month in Salisbury and four hundred dollars a year in Sire Lake.
Well, Latasha, the reason I asked about the increase is that, uh, this year's budget shows forty-six hundred, and for the proposed twenty sixteen, it shows fifty-four hundred.
Because I think for some reason, it wasn't added in, all of it, though.
So the forty-six hundred is not enough?
So the three fifty, uh, times twelve?
I figured Angela would. There we go. That's great. Both y'all at the same time. All right, and then the other four hundred from?
Mm-hmm, it's from Sire Lake.
So that'd be forty-six hundred. But?
Is the Regional Planning Commission still sending someone from Beaumont for, uh, the funds they were dispersing to, uh, office out of the WIC office with you guys?
No.
Well, but they are doing something up here. This has to do with the funding for, uh, when people came in for help for their light bill and what have you. About two years ago, the Planning Commission started handling that, and they were sending somebody up here.
They would send a monitor? Well, very occasionally. It used to with the monthly, which we thoroughly enjoyed. We really did, but then they, I guess, it's?
Have we backed off of it?
They stopped sending that, but, you know, they didn't rehandle that totally, and it didn't cost the county any.
No, but after y'all stopped handling it about a year and a half to two years ago, and they, and all the calls, we started directing them to the Planning Commission, does somebody come up here from the Planning Commission, so they handle it all out of Beaumont?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Weren't they coming up to the Methodist Church?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, and I spoke with, um?
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about. Uh, she called about two months ago, and she asked, would we consider taking it again, because they can't, I invited them to take it.
To do it, yeah.
Because of the, so the requirements, she said the requirements dropped, because I think they had a lot of issues, maybe with some of the other subcontract. And I told her, I said, we simply cannot. I said, our engine healthcare rate is increasing, and we're state mandated to do this, and we simply, we can't.
Yes, ma'am.
She called me again on Friday. I haven't had a chance to call her back yet.
Colleen Halliburton.
Yeah, Halliburton.
But she still wants us to take that over. I don't, that was what the message said. I don't know if she has made any changes or whatnot, but I can let you know whenever I talk with her.
Is that something, I'm sorry?
It's okay.
We were going, when Judge Carroll was here, was when it was first presented, and Linda came and presented it to me. At the time, it just wasn't feasible, because we were in the middle of flu season, and it was crazy busy and, um?
Honestly, it was. She was, they were going to take it. At first, they said no. They thought about it a couple of days, and then they said yes. Judge Carroll would just be like, he said, great, then we'll study for accounting. But then, the regional planning commission had said, we can't turn it over to the health department. We can't do that, because it was a federal grant, and it was signed, sealed, and delivered by our office, but it ended up in the healthcare department to administer it. So they said, what we have to do is wait till the next year, and the health department can apply for it. Well, I guess when the time came that anyone could apply for that grant, they did not notify y'all, and I pointed them, I said, they're willing to take it.
Yeah.
They're willing to take it. It's two, it's a few steps down from my door, and they're willing to take it. They said that they couldn't, because they could not, uh, sign it over to the health department out of the insurance healthcare department. So I have to say, to any of them, did say they would accept it.
Well, I believe the paperwork I saw from the Planning Commission the other day showed that seventeen thousand was coming to Harden County for the next year, is that right?
I thought it was thirty.
Remember? Did, uh, one of the thirty thousand at one time?
I think, at, at originally, of course, years ago, it was much, much more than that, but whenever I talked with Ms. Halliburton, uh, she said, um, she said, well, actually, it's down to thirteen thousand. And I was just like, thirteen thousand? And she said, well, but then it may go up, which that, that happens with the grants, but?
This is a federal grant?
That's all.
Planning Commission getting?
Federal grant through regional planning.
Colleen reached out to you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
She called on Friday, but, uh, it was Friday afternoon, as I was walking out the door, and I was by myself there, so.
Is that something that your office would consider handling?
Yes, sir. We had already planned it out, how we were gonna set it up and everything, and then they said we couldn't do it until we reapplied, and I didn't hear back from her until Friday, so I can sure call her back when I get to.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I think what happens, Ken, is they base it like on year-to-year need. I think that was the judge's concern prior to Wayne coming in office, is that if we didn't spend it in Harden County, it would be reduced. And so I think we need to, if you'd be willing to do that, that'd be awesome.
I'm sure. And I will say, that's what the judge had said. He said, Toy and him have a lot more staff than y'all do. Maybe they can take it off, if they'll just consider it. Well, um, I will say, regional planning commission did process and help some of the people. I don't know how many. The judge did ask for account, Judge Carroll asked for accountability to see how many people who started out with that grant last year, but we never, never got anything, and so that. But, uh, they would tell us, have the, if someone asks for assistance with utility bills, you know, or unexpected prescriptions or something, have them call us, and we had the telephone number, we would give it to them. You know, I don't know whether or not, how many of them were assisted.
I know they looked for.
And even this year, and even this year, they're doing that. That's what Ms. Halliburton had said, we should have just been telling them to call us.
I knew they were looking for a volunteer in the area, but I had not heard they didn't find one, so. But if y'all could do that, it'd be awesome, because I think it has the potential to be an increased, above and beyond. Yeah. It's kinda like the sewer grants, and once we reached out there and got a lot of contact back, we went sky-high on our grant.
Yeah, my only concern through the regional planning commission is that we get our fair share.
Correct.
That they don't see that, okay, where you're talking about engine healthcare or coming over to health services, that, okay, here Harden County's a couple hundred thousand dollars below their legal requirement, or maximum requirement we could be, so they got some, so we'll shift the, shift some things over there.
I'll call, I'll call Sean.
Exactly. I mean, I, and we never spent a penny out of it for, out of all twenty-seven years that we administered.
One penny was spent for administration, and Ms. Burton, Ms. Halliburton was telling me that they wouldn't pay, so won't do it.
Because I just have a night, and Chris can answer this better than I can. With all these hurricane Ike grants and stuff starting to run out, then they're facing a reduction in personnel down there. So they're tightening up, and, you know, if they shift stuff to us, if we can afford it, and, I mean, it's necessary, but just to shift stuff to us, because they don't wanna lose a person down there or something, you know?
But what it is, yeah, they, they, they were being, uh, it was just an interesting situation, where they, they took control back of that fund, and then after a little while, they lost control of the fund. And, and then our, our, our position is, not only can it help people, but probably more people be forthcoming if it was just, if you had a consistent place to go?
Yeah, correct.
And a consistent person to talk to, it could probably increase.
Seven years.
Yeah, could probably increase.
Maybe as well.
That's right.
We know them, their kids, their A Ds, I promise you.
That's right, yeah. Y'all do a great job. Yeah. Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions, Miss Latasha? Miss Jones? We appreciate you just standing up there like that. You have anything else to say? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item D, ending in healthcare, Miss Davis?
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Uh, just looking at it, did you start to say something?
No, sir, go right ahead.
Just looking at it, we're still below our cap, but we're inching up to that, right? Just looking at it, we're still below our cap, but we're inching up, is that right?
We're inching up.
Inching up.
By about forty eight thousand on this next pay period. Uh, we do have large hospital bills, uh, it appears in a lot of these line items, that not much has been spent, but it will get there in the next couple of months. Uh, certainly hope that it will not hit the nine hundred and sixty nine thousand.
Is that what our obligation is?
That's what our obligation is for this year. For our, our upcoming year, our obligation, according to the figures that Shirley provided me, Shirley Stevens out of the tax office. The um, estimated eight percent G R T L, it's nine hundred sixty one thousand, seven hundred ninety three eighty one. Now, that may go up a few dollars, may go down a few dollars, not as much as what I had thought when I talked with you, Judge McDaniel, um, could go up to three hundred dollars, go down a hundred dollars. So it's gonna be in that general area. But the reason that I put, and, and you will notice, the only thing that I really focused on. I mean, there's a few things, like travel expense, which we, the only reason I put the three thousand, and I dropped that by eight hundred dollars, is because we never go anywhere. We never go anywhere, but I put it there in case there's a need, in case the state determines that you're mandated to do this meeting, or whatever, they haven't yet, so I don't foresee it. Um, but everything else, um, any of the physician services, prescribed drugs, hospital inpatient, outpatient, lab and x-rays, prescription optional, uh, G C H C optional, U T M B contract. And then your C R N A and P A optional services, all of that has to total up to nine hundred sixty one thousand, seven hundred ninety three dollars, eighty one cents. I know it will go up a little, most probably, it'll go up a little in July, so those figures might need to change, just so that we could show the state, in the event they ask. What, you know, they're going to ask what our eight percent is, and I will give them that figure come September one.
What have we done in the past, as far as showing on our budgets? I could look, but I don't have it with me.
Mm-hmm.
State mandates, because if I'm looking at this correctly here, and here again, just like a while ago, I might be confusing myself, we're looking at a four hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase over last year's budget.
And we're down six hundred, so that's a million dollars we're in the hole right now, if we're looking at it like that.
What um, I think Judge Carroll has done in the past is, is pretty much left the budget the same every year, except when the salary increases, and then, just for rainy day fund, you would have to go on your contingency, if there was a problem.
If there was a need, yeah, because I would always request it.
Right.
Because I don't want someone to say, Linda Davis didn't request the eight percent, what's up with that? Yes, I did. But then whoever deems it necessary to change the figures, that's okay.
Actually, last year, I think it was decreased by about fifty thousand, if I remember right.
No, or, or more.
Yeah, that was a budget gimmick.
Right.
Or more. But that's okay, we know that it's there if we need it, if we have to. But we monitor it very closely, we're very strict with it. Um, our indigent healthcare rolls have increased sixty eight percent since last year. Sixty eight percent is a lot.
But see, there, there were years when we were budgeted what, actual, and, and the costs were controlled real well, and we were staying maybe two, three hundred thousand less. But it's been inching up, but your obligation is for eight percent.
Yes, sir.
So it makes sense to weigh the budget to full amount, and hope you can come in under it.
We have so far, I've been directed for sixteen years.
Yeah, every, every year we've come in under.
Yeah, every year we've come in under it, but that doesn't mean it couldn't hit, all it would take would be three or four or five cancer patients, and it's gonna blow us out of the water.
Okay, now, but here you've got a hundred and seven thousand, I mean, we're figuring seven thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And you say our actual obligation is nine hundred and sixty one thousand.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that, now, that is for the indigent healthcare medical claims, the eight percent is the nine hundred sixty one thousand. Now, you also got added in there, um, that the judge has suggested, is five hundred dollars for telephone, for the year, uh, three thousand.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that, that cannot be, you cannot, you cannot use the department budget. There's certain things that, that you have to, the county has to furnish, and this does not qualify for the eight percent.
No, that's, that's correct. Uh, now, I don't know on his, but on mine, it was highlighted.
What'd you say, good?
The one million doesn't even include any of the salaries, that's, those are all set at zero right now.
So salaries don't count in the?
No, sir. Let me show you something, and I should have.
That's typical state, yeah.
Sure. See here, the highlighted figures here, that's what totals up to the nine hundred sixty one thousand, seven hundred ninety three eighty one. That is strictly medical claims for the indigent healthcare eligible clients.
Sure.
Okay, and, and the rest of it, and that's what, I don't even touch salary, retirement, or I, I don't touch that, because y'all do that over here. Um, I asked for eight hundred dollars less in travel, we're not even gonna use that, the three, the three thousand, y'all look at it, we haven't traveled probably in three or four years. When Judge Carroll asked us several years ago, please cut expenses, that's the only thing we could cut expenses in, was travel, that was it. We never were exuberant, we were never high in office supplies, or uh, you know, our computer lease, which um, that's high. So we have to do that, to have that, to operate, to function.
I've got a question for answering. What is the tax base that this is figured on?
Do you have that with you? I had it from last year, but I didn't bring it with me.
I have.
And then it doesn't include all the tax collections, huh?
Yeah, this what, um, Shirley gives her a printout.
I'll show you what I have. Yeah, I can show you.
I got a copy last year, I don't have one from this year yet.
I can show you what I have.
Right here, this is what Shirley's.
Just for.
And then she takes the percentage based off of that.
And then in July, she'll give me another, sometime, a, a, a couple, a couple years may be different.
Okay, then our local tax collection is uh, twelve million, rather than fifteen million?
Well, now, up here, I know there's a fifteen million dollar figure up here somewhere, I saw, seems like right in this area.
Well, I'm not complaining, because it's capitalated in our favor.
Yeah.
But I thought that, you know, if we capitalize.
She probably did a percentage, you know, not based on a hundred percent of taxes.
Well, it looks, looks like there've been several percentages figured in here.
Well, sad, is the state says that this is not an unfunded mandate, because if we go over the eight percent, we're reimbursed. But this is an unfunded mandate.
If we go over, if we go over eight percent.
Exactly.
There's no doubt.
We may be reimbursed.
Maybe, maybe.
Odds are we would not, I would tell you.
It's a money thing.
Odds are we would not. You would have to hit that eight percent early on, and then they only reimburse nine percent.
Yeah, you got ten percent.
And I'm always being told by the court, we can't even pay ten percent more than our eight percent.
I doubt this court, I, I think this court would say shut it off, because we, we don't, but the state doesn't have the money.
That's right.
Yeah.
The, the southern part of the state.
It sounds good, but uh.
Yeah, it sounds.
They don't come through with much.
No. So.
They just get bragging rights for reducing tax rate.
Right.
They put stipulation, they only call them a tax cut.
So my, when I submit the budget, it's strictly, what I focus on mostly, ninety nine percent of it is the indigent healthcare eligible medical claims. Cause that's what I have to beat down on, and watch, and juggle, and then sometimes get an input from a different perspective. That helps me to look at something differently, to make a good decision to affect the county. Hey, we're advocates for our clients, but we're advocates for the county taxpayers too. Um, there's a, a couple of items here, uh, lab and x-rays have gone crazy this particular year.
Yeah, you've already exceeded your budget at six months.
Crazy. But now, what you'll understand is, uh, I, I might have requested more than that last year, but this is what was approved. Okay, so, yeah, twenty two thousand, seven hundred, just for lab and x-rays.
But that's part of the state qualifying.
That's part of the state, oh, yeah, all that is, that's all I really talk about.
We've got the nine sixty one, which, when we hit that, the county has to.
They can stop.
They, they could say, this is it.
That's it, they can, they can shut them, they can shut that down.
But it'd actually be more than that, because we have salaries and some of these other expenses.
No, well, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what we, we budget the full amount we're obligated to, that state qualifies.
Yeah.
But then, how does a budget this year, what the county has to pay, how's it compare this year to last year?
Uh, it's very close, very close, cause it was nine sixty nine, but that was with the final figure. This is nine sixty one, now I look for that to go up, and again, that's based off of the tax.
That's based off the estimates that we have.
But if, that, that's, if we go, if we go six thou, six hundred thousand dollars, that still doesn't reduce the county's obligation.
Right.
For y'all's salaries and stuff.
No.
What I'm trying to figure out is, the nine sixty one in my mind, that's our obligation, we, that's covered.
Regardless of whether we like it or not.
That's covered, we don't, we don't have to go above it.
Mm-hmm.
What is the county part, I mean, what is the county budget for salaries and office supplies, and whatever else that we have to do?
That's y'all's decision. I can't figure that, I never have been able to, the judge always tell you don't.
Or they've been taking it out of.
General fund? I don't know, because the, in the past, can't, in the last, you're talking about our salary, insurance, everything, anything other than.
Has to be paid for. Anything, anything, anything that does not qualify for the nine sixty one.
That was always figured behind, I didn't know, I don't know, I never asked.
And that's what I'm trying to get a handle, is it a hundred thousand?
It's included in the six month, in the six month figures, all the salaries and everything are included in that.
But you would have to take, uh, okay, does this six months' figure exclude?
No, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, we, we're not comparing apples and apples.
You figured everything below, the, the one million is everything below salaries, correct?
Well, there's a.
It, no, well, now, uh, starting at four twenty, where it says telephone travel, equipment expense, computer lease, and miscellaneous.
Right.
Alright, now that is not for me to figure, that's why I called Judge McDaniel, and I told him, I said, there's some of these things I can't put numbers on. I don't put down how much we're supposed to be paid, or how much insurance, or workers' comp, or dental, life insurance, I never have, I've never, I've, I've always been told, they would figure that. Whoever, you know, the court would figure out what would go there, so I didn't need to put anything.
Okay, so starting at three ten, or does it start at, uh, at office supplies?
Start at, um.
Is that, is that part of the nine sixty one?
No, sir, starting at four hundred through four hundred seventeen is.
Your nine sixty one?
Yes, I, I actually, no, wait a minute, on ineligible expense, look at four ten.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. The state does not consider ineligible expense as an eligible expense, that kinda makes sense.
Right.
Kind of a no-brainer. You can't count it as an expense, but we have to have ineligible expense in the event that it is much more cost-effective. Sometimes we have to pay a little bit more to some providers, in order to keep them from having to go to Galveston, or Houston, to where you may not get a very good rate, and you may have to pay three times as much.
Right.
So, the ineligible expense of fifteen thousand, that's why that is there, that is not included in the nine sixty one, that is the county's.
But everything from four hundred, four seventeen, with the exception of four ten?
Yes, sir.
Is the nine sixty one?
Is the nine sixty one.
It, it looks to me like it'd be far simpler, if we had a pyramid line, that takes indigent health, indigent care dash.
Mandated?
Mandated. And then, we had indigent healthcare county funding.
I'm fine with that, I just took what I was handed and worked with it.
So that we could tell, I mean, I know we can go figure and add all this up, and come up with a.
Well, it appears from last year's budget, Mr. Pelton, that total was five ninety five, seven forty nine, that we budgeted. A hundred and ninety thousand of that was uh, salaries and everything besides what's mandated by the state, so it's looking at, we find, we uh, budgeted around four hundred thousand.
Okay, well, that's what I'm, so.
That's what y'all budgeted, but.
Right.
If we budgeted four hundred thousand.
It's what was budgeted, but that wasn't eight percent.
That, that can't, that can't be accurate.
That's, that's.
If we budgeted four hundred thousand, then that's the county's share, and then we're obligated up to nine hundred and sixty one thousand.
Yep.
Well, the total budget was five ninety five, and I've added up everything in that column so far, that she didn't say we was obligated for.
That's what was.
Like salaries, uh, fiscal taxes, health insurance, and I come up with a hundred and ninety thousand.
Did you also include that ineligible expenses?
An eligible expense, and that.
Fifteen, uh, fourteen?
It's four ten.
I think.
And is it possible?
So that's another fifteen thousand, so.
Plus.
Is it possible to put it in two different categories?
Yeah, I got all that, I didn't get the, uh, ineligible.
So we can tell what state mandated, and what's county furnished?
Well, that's about two.
That, that's what we need, because I mean, otherwise, you're doing a lot of gymnastic here, to try to compare one year. You ought to be able to look at it and say, okay, here's what was budgeted last year, here's what we're budgeting this year.
That'd be nice, but this is the way it's always been.
I mean, and days of computing shouldn't be impossible.
Yeah.
You know, so that we just look at glance, because it's confusing. If the state mandates it, then we have no control over that. We only have control over what the county furnishes, and if there's gonna be any, any increase or any cuts, it's gonna have to come out of county first, you know.
There's a couple of line items that I asked for a little bit more, uh, I asked for two hundred thirty two dollars more in the computer lease line item. Because depending on how many indigent healthcare clients, uh, we have on our program, that are applying for S S I. We have, we enter them into a certain program, and the computer, the uh, software program that we have, has a special program that they um, do searches, to see if that person was approved for Medicaid. We search constantly, daily, I'm not gonna say all day long, every day, but we search daily, uh, with S S I, we do a lot of documentation, notations, to determine if someone is being, fixing to be approved for S S I and Medicaid. But this other program backs us up, we can't depend solely on that program, but it helps to back us up in the event that we do miss one. So, uh, I've asked for a little bit more on that, because they charge like fifty cents a, a person that's put into the Medicaid, it's two hundred thirty two bucks more, eight hundred dollars less in travel expense. Personally, I could probably do away with the whole three thousand, I don't give a flip, because we don't travel. Unless the state would say that we were mandated to go to certain meetings or something, and they, and they never have, that I'm aware of.
Do they do any, um, any associations put on any conferences for indigent health?
Hmm, there's, there's conferences for indigent health, there's the T I C A, Texas Indigent Healthcare Association Conference, we never go to it anymore. Uh, there is the software program that has a conference once a year, we haven't been to that in probably three or four years. Uh, they have, the software company has a training program in Conroe, we don't go to that, simply because I don't feel we have to. Now, if we get into a new client, and, I mean, a new employee that comes in, in case somebody retires, and if they will let us replace that person, and I certainly hope so, considering we've had a sixty eight percent increase in people. Uh, clients in the indigent healthcare field, if you do not monitor them closely, you will skyrocket, you will hit that nine hundred sixty one thousand.
But now this year, it looks like that you're sort of right on target to come in at the five hundred ninety five, is that right?
Well, like, uh, keep in mind, we've got, um, we're gonna have June, July, and August yet.
Okay.
This next pay period, we're submitting over forty eight thousand dollars worth of claims, okay? Thirty five of that is inpatient hospital, right now, you look at inpatient, there's nothing.
Okay, what would you ask to make it, we're gonna spend the rest of the year?
The rest of the year? It's anybody's guess, it's just a wild guess, the WAG system, but, um. I would say probably at least June, July, and August possibly, it just depends on how many big hospital bills we have coming, but I would say at least two hundred thousand, at least.
You, your, your indigent healthcare doesn't go through, I mean, through September?
No, sir, uh, we start September one through August thirty one. But that sounds like to me might change, I might, might need to look into that. Y'all said the state is July, now?
Just one of yours.
Oh, just one of yours, okay.
For the nine hundred and sixty one?
We have to spend it, but they put us on their fiscal.
Are we on a state, we, nine hundred and sixty one bound to be on our fiscal year, huh?
Hmm, no, sir.
It's on the state's year?
It's on the state fiscal year, yes, sir, because that's what we have to look at, is they, they say from September one through August thirty first.
So that's a month off from us.
So these expenditures are act, actually have an extra month? They're actually September through March, instead of October through March?
This is for a twelve month.
Is that right?
This is.
Yes, so an extra month.
Yeah, from September one through, uh, and I know that, um. I tell you what, right now, I printed up September one, two thousand fourteen, through thirty one, through three thirty one, two thousand fifteen, and I'm showing two hundred fifteen, make sure I'm looking, yeah, two hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred forty three, thirty eight. Now, um, the. Can't go by that, I don't know exactly what the auditor has for October one through three thirty one. But I know it's, 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 of course, it's different, because we have September included in this.
And we don't?
I thought we.
Not for October.
The, the, since it's in the general fund?
It's October. It's October.
It's October through March.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I was actually gonna talk to Andrew about it, maybe move it into our grant system where it pick up September if you should.
Well, yours, you're quoting two fifteen, but our paper's showing two seventy-five, nine seventy-nine.
Okay, but that does not include just indigent healthcare eligible medical bills, it includes other things, it might include jail. It may include, um, um, and I, I have twenty, almost, well, I have twenty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-two ninety-five reimbursements, which dropped that, so we did get back that much so far this year, um.
You shouldn't have any, uh, jail claims in your budget, right?
No, 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 but, but it's in his, he said what he looked at, I said that may include, because.
Your printout may include jail.
Yeah, when I look at it like this.
It's gonna show it because it's in our software.
Okay.
Shows eighteen thousand for the jail.
I got you, alright.
But that's not.
Two fifteen in her system, it shows.
Yeah.
Linda, in, in this budget for last year, do you have how much that we actually budgeted for government mandated expenses?
That's five hundred thousand dollar figure.
Five hundred thousand?
Yes, sir, hold on just a second, it was something that Judge Caraway sent me back in.
I was saying it's five hundred or six hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's a five hundred thousand dollar figure.
Then, then the other ninety-five thousand was salaries and other things, I assume.
Um.
So it can be just the salaries and one oh four?
Yeah, well, that's where, that's where.
When he, uh, yeah, the judge had requested that, right now, uh, right now, what I'm showing that we've spent uh, from, I'm just glancing at this, that, uh, from September one two thousand fourteen through now, through, um, through April is two hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-six fifty-eight, that is the actual, goes toward the nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-two.
Okay, so, so we're, then.
We're way under.
Yeah, okay, so based on that, we're way under.
Yeah, well, but we're way under the eight percent figure, yeah, but, but yeah.
We're, we're, we're way under, so, and, and I'm, I'm leading up to something here because, okay.
Okay. I was gonna tell you that figure.
Let, let's say, last year, and the amount budgeted is, is a key. If we budgeted five hundred thousand out of a nine hundred and, and it was more than nine sixty-one because we collected more taxes last year, then, well, we're gonna collect the same amount this year, somewhere's near. Okay, so let's say it was nine, nine sixty-one last year, so that would say that we budgeted four hundred thousand sixty-one dollars, four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars less than what our mandate was, is that correct?
Uh, what I see here is that, um, on nine seventeen fourteen, Angela Gore, Hardin County, requested UTMB contract be changed from a hundred eight thousand, no, a hundred two thousand eight hundred seventeen to fifty-two thousand eight hundred seventeen. Five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars as requested, um, from HC, IHC, per Judge Caraway, uh, state IHC eligible county residents to pay medical expenses. The eight percent of GERTM, GTR, was of Hardin County as required by state IHC, was nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
But minus five hundred twenty-seven dollars, eight hundred seventeen, which equaled four hundred and forty-one dollars, seven hundred sixty-five twenty-eight difference from the nine hundred sixty-nine thousand that was required.
Okay, the real key is,
Mm-hmm.
how much last year did we actually budget? I know our obligation was nine hundred sixty-nine thousand.
Nine sixty-nine minus four forty-one would be the amount.
Yeah, it's five hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, just hold it right there just a minute.
Okay.
Okay, now that says that we, we budgeted an amount that was five hundred and twenty-eight thousand under our budget.
Under our mandatory.
Under our mandated budget.
Yes, sir.
Realizing that if that came through, we were rolling the dice for five hundred something thousand dollars, what we were doing.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, now, in this right here, I see a three fifty and a three hundred and, and all that, in this budget, do we know how much we're budgeting mandated?
No, sir, I don't know that, until y'all tell me.
We've got to come up with it, because what I'm saying is, we're obligated to nine hundred sixty-one thousand dollars.
Exactly.
But if you, if we come in here this year and we jump from four forty-one to nine hundred and sixty-one, then we're not starting six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the hole here. We're adding another four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to that, so now you're starting off a million dollars in hole. So, I, I think we should get to this in our budget, to what our exposure, because that's a legal mandated exposure, that's not, yeah.
Yes, sir.
We need to work towards that, but I don't think you can take that bite in one year.
I don't think we should. I don't think we should, I don't think we should try.
I don't think we should try either, I think we should, I think we should be on some program based upon what our actual expenditures are and maybe jumping a hundred thousand. Because we're fixing to bite off a big chunk here.
And this fixing to get a bigger bite too.
Aren't, aren't we required to provide a proper attorney? All of that money we're budgeting over there should be included in this nine hundred sixty-one.
No, no.
It should be, it's the same difference.
No.
It can't be, because they, they, they don't reimburse you for proper attorneys.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not health.
No, that's not healthcare.
This is strictly health that, that we're.
What about, what about the, the inmates, uh, help?
That's another mandate.
That's another mandate.
It, it don't go until eight percent.
Don't follow it eight percent.
I've already checked into that, I thought it did, but it doesn't.
You, do you understand what I'm talking about, Angela?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we need, we know we're not gonna get by as cheap next year probably as we did this year. But we're gonna be careful how much of a bite we take.
I, I understand, and I do agree with you, but, loo- look at the big picture. Wh- when our auditor, outside auditor presented us with our outside audit, the, uh, regulations changed to where all these colas are now gonna have to be shown as a expenditure. Alright, this right here, if, if we're gonna do what you talking about, we're gonna have to change the expen- we're gonna have to raise the tax rate five cents to keep up.
Well, now you understand my passion from last year, I was looking at all of that going, we got almost two million dollars on the team.
Well. That, that's too different. You, you, you can show your liability on an audit. And if you, it is a liability and it probably would cut the contingency fund out soon. You may not reach that, but based upon prior year experiences, you can budget a reasonable amount, but you've always got a footnote somewheres and realize that while we're budgeting five hundred, let's say five hundred forty-one thousand, we could have to come up with another four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, in your mind, you have to automatically take it out of contingency.
Well, it has to come out of contingency, that's the only place you can get it.
And so then, at three and a half, you're at three.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you got three and a half, your, your medical expenses don't go up.
If, if the auditors let you buy with it, I don't know whether they do or they don't. Evidently, they have, evidently, they have not cut us each year this amount.
That's right.
Or, or maybe they have.
No, they haven't.
Okay, I didn't think they had.
No, eventually, it's gonna come out of contingency one way or the other, whenever the, the expenditures happen, we'd have to get it out of contingency. If you wanna budget for it in a budget, it has to come out of contingency.
When you give us that printout of there, the, the information on our, on the amount we have in contingency, there was a two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars in there that you say we can't spend, it's earmarked. Is that for this? What, what is that for?
No, sir. That was prepaid expenditures and that's your retirement, insurance.
Okay, alright.
But I, you know, I, I personally think that we need to, uh, have a budget that realistically shows that we could be obligated to another, and Linda's done a very good job over the years.
Thank you.
But, that shows that, okay, we're still way below our cap.
Yes.
And, but we need to pick up, we need to be gradually picking that up as we can. But as I look at this budget here, we, we can't pick it up this year all in one time. If we do, we've gotta cover it with a tax rate somewhere.
Well, but we can't show, on the mandate, we can't show less than eight percent.
That's right.
So you have to show it.
That's right.
Well, you, you footnote it somewheres in your audit, or somewheres in your budget.
Yeah.
That it's out there.
Oh, yeah.
But you do not have to show the full.
Yeah, I've already asked Linda how this has worked in the past, where we've budgeted way under the, the amount that we're liable for. She says that the information she provides to the state shows this request amount over here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but the actual budget amount is this, nearly six.
The amount we calculate our tax rate on is the amount we estimate we'll spend, not what we're obligated to spend.
Right, but at some point in time.
Somewhere's in there, it has to be foot.
They call your hand.
It has to be foot.
Yeah, something happens.
It has to be footnoted, I don't know how they do that, but, uh,
But this is.
What, what I, what I'm, I'm taking as much time, we cannot show one million seven thousand plus salaries or one million seven in this budget we're working on right now. If you do, that's automatically gonna kick you to a million dollars short rather than six hundred and twenty-eight back.
Now you understand why I was so upset last year.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, and we didn't want that to hit the public, you know, really.
I understand.
But this is how it's been being done, I mean, this is not, up until last year, this is how it's been being done, is, is an actual what we thought would be spent, not what we were required to spend.
Yes, sir, but on my state report, let me show, on my state report, I do put what they say, our eight percent, well, well, what our eight percent is. And it has eight percent of GRTL, and it was nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-two, what is that, twenty-eight, twenty-three? We both have glasses, uh, eight, okay, and this is what we spent so far through April. So, and then this shows our five percent, six percent and eight percent, so we're way off.
At this year, our effective tax rate should go up pretty good. But last year, if we had shown the full nine hundred sixty-one in the budget to be covered by taxes, we'd have gone way above the effective tax rate, the road back, yeah.
Yeah, the road back is fifty-eight, yeah.
I do think this thing needs to be worked out a little bit of years till we get up there.
That would be nice, at first, you know, I was just like, oh, but that's, that's not, that's not our eight percent. But I always knew that, but if you need it, it's there. If you go over in lab and x-rays, that's okay, it'll be pulled out of another portion, another line item to balance it out, cause you're gonna have it. I'm just thankful, now, there has been a couple of times in the history of indigent healthcare that we did hit, not while I was but, there has been a couple of times that we did hit the eight percent. But, um, and it could happen again, I hope not.
Well, have you seen any alleviation through the Affordable Care Act? Does it seem like it's going?
Doesn't sound like it, it was sixty-eight percent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, more people applying for indigent healthcare.
What would they do if we didn't budget it automatically?
We're mandated.
State mandated.
What, what would they do?
They'd come down here and take the chair away from you.
It's the state mandate.
I get to a point where I wanna put them on a.
You'll hand up the chair, huh?
They, they, they send you a bill and it's.
That's why I don't wanna hear any more bragging from the state that they cut taxes.
No, they didn't cut taxes, what they did was did a forest that makes it look like they cut taxes.
No, and I. And I can assure you, the state is not gonna take away the county responsibility, it would not surprise me if they increase it.
They add to them every year.
They don't wanna cap the prison.
I'm surprised it hasn't been increased, some counties do much more than twenty-one percent of poverty, they do fifty percent.
I guess the real question right now is what do we want this figure over here to show? We don't want it to show a million seven thousand dollars.
I think if, uh.
That's sound like a judges problem, really.
That's what I was fixing to say, I'm gonna just take this on, how about if I do that and I just submit it to everybody?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's good.
Well, if you want my opinion, I agree a hundred percent with what Mr. Pelt said and what Chris said about last year and everything else, but if you want my opinion right now, I say we budget what we budgeted last year. And then, we need, we need to work on implemented steps into this.
I, I, I'm not against that.
But it looks like we may already exceed the amount.
I think we need to give, it's, it's, pretty sure we're gonna be a little bit above last year probably, or better, because.
What it sounds like.
Yeah, we've got sixty-eight percent increase, so.
Or you don't need to say.
But.
Yeah.
But I'm kinda like Nubbin, but it doesn't really matter what we budget, because we don't know exactly what the figures are gonna be anyway. But even, even if it goes, even if it goes over, we're still, excuse me, we're still liable, we're still obligated to pay it.
Up to that.
So, even if we budget what we budgeted last year, it's not gonna change anything.
Well, it, it just helps us on funding this year. Yeah, it'll help us keep this tax rate, yeah.
I think that, uh, Mr. Pelt said about putting a footnote on here, that we look into doing that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Although we budget this much.
The auditors hadn't made us footnoted.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I'm, I'm for budgeting like more this year.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do.
Cause it can be hard to put that tax rate together anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Linda's done a great job over the years, cause I've been sitting here looking at it.
Yeah, well, and I've got two good employees too.
But I'm telling you, and talking at the school and stuff, a lot of counties don't have nearly control over their indigent healthcare, like Hardin County.
And the only other, uh.
We're maybe, no, we're not.
Unless I misread the statute, the only other way around indigent healthcare is having a county hospital.
Yeah.
And evidently, the wise wisdom y'all had years ago, we're spending too much money over there, so.
Well, they cut it out, wait for I got it.
Oh, okay.
But, but, I, I do have to say, Commissioner Cooper, even with the county hospital,
Yeah, I know, when they cut it out, it's, it's been gone long.
they still have to do a certain level of indigent healthcare.
They could cut it out in the eighties.
They do, even, because there's hospital districts and then counties that have no hospitals, and even the hospital districts have to do indigent healthcare. Yeah, there's no getting one.
It's a complicated world.
Yeah, sticky.
That's why we work, so we can pay for all those. Right?
That's right.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
The senior services budget, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
I think it's all.
Alright.
It stays the same, right?
Yes. No.
You wanna pack this courtroom?
Not that way.
You don't take footnotes.
Does anybody have anything further?
I'm moving with your turn.
Okay.
We adjourn.